This is the Nottingham Planning Board meeting. It is a joint meeting with the other town boards and departments. And this is six thirty Wednesday, August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty five. And I'll call this meeting to order. And if you wanted to lead the, if you want to lead a pledge allegiance, you're more than welcome to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this is, the purpose of this meeting is to kind of coordinate between all departments and boards to try and get either consensus on anything that might need to change, but also information sharing on things that they see in their particular realm that might be of a concern to another board. So we've got, and I'll, I'll ask people to introduce themselves in just a second. So really, we want to, you know, have some shared information. If there are applications that we're seeing more of, or if there are issues we're seeing more of, then, you know, let's, we can talk about that. Tonight, I think I'd like to just, we can go through this agenda. But what I'd like to do is offer the municipal departments first to be able to talk and bring up anything if they have it. And then we can move towards each board, and then we can go through that. And then we'll talk about the legislative changes. And then ultimately, kind of going through a timeline that we have to do if we are going to make any zoning changes for this next year. So with that, I'll just ask, I'll start with myself. Dirk Roper, he's chairman of the planning board, and I'll go to my left. Chris?
Chris Evans, planning board secretary.
Adam Ryan, planning board.
Terry Barnes, zoning board of adjustments.
Blair Gady, Strator Regional Planning Commission.
Old Smith, Nottingham Conservation Commission.
Susan Moon, Conservation Commission.
Mary Coleridge, Conservation Commission.
And.
Mini Arsenal, planning board member.
John Decker, BOS of representative.
Drew Stevens, planning board vice chair and conservation commission member.
And any agency or department members here?
Dale Sobia, Building Inspector Code Enforcement.
Charlotte Vice, Select Board.
Okay, so we were going to go through and recap the town meeting of two thousand and twenty five. I think there's pretty quick things that we, we did already include, you know, a number of things that passed, and those got put into the zoning regulations for two thousand and twenty five. Those zoning regulations are updated, those are available. We do know that there's some state legislation that will probably need to change some more coming up in two thousand and twenty six. But I do want to just go through each department and, or just to see if there's a concern that we would like to talk about individually with those ones. So Dale, can I start with you? If you have anything specific you want to go through, and then we'll have a kind of an open discussion afterwards.
Sure. Thank you.
Again, Dale Sobia, Building Inspector Code Enforcement. Are you referring to specifically from changes from last year, or?
Anything from, we already know the changes from last year.
Yep.
Right, they're in, I mean, unless there's issues with some of those changes. If you have other issues, or if you would like to make some recommendations, maybe moving forward to maybe two thousand and twenty six or beyond.
Okay.
Changes?
Um, so over the last few years, I've been really kind of pushing for more continuity between all the boards and stuff. And I feel like last year, it was, we, we took some pretty big leaps, and we actually accomplished that. And we got a lot of things done, and we started bringing things in line. And then ironically, after we did that, and we all got on the same page, as we're going to discuss later tonight, the state came in and changed the majority of these things. But that's fine, we will move forward, you know, whatever the changes will be. I think we've got a lot of work with us, ahead of us, adapting what those changes are. We really have to follow them, we don't have a choice, and we'll talk about that. I think the one area that I had hoped to accomplish more last year, that we really didn't meet the mark, it wasn't really within my realm, but I was the one enforcing it. And I was trying to upgrade our subdivision process. Not change any of the rules, not change any of the plans. But I really wanted us to have a better way of communicating with each other, better way of communicating with the public. I think we lack in that area. And I'm not even suggesting we change a single rule, I'm just talking about the process. We started working on that, Blair was a big help. I was looking for a lot of input from different departments and stuff like that. I don't think we quite reached our benchmark, and I'd like to pick that up again, but I need everybody's help. Basically, what I'm looking for is, again, I'm not trying to change a single thing, I just want to know what each person, each department is responsible for, and put all of that into one document, that when a contractor comes in, we can say, here you go, these are the expectations from Nottingham. I don't think we do a very good job of communicating that right now. It's all there, the information is there, but I think we can just be a little bit more customer friendly, customer service type thing. And then not only that, but it's easier for us to hold them accountable when they don't do, if they don't do what they're supposed to. And that has happened several times, you know. So I would really like, that's my big push that I want to do this year, is I want all these departments for us all to work together. I'll take the lead, I'll do most of the work, but I need help from all of you to tell me what it is that your expectations are. That's the main thing that I would like to work on this year. I do have a couple of other little things that we can talk about zoning changes later, but that's really my only, not even concern. I think we did pretty well this year as far as incorporating a lot of things. That's just the one area we fell short. And that's my main thing, that's all I have.
Okay, do we want to, well, Dale has the floor, does, and mentioned zoning changes. Do you want, do you want to talk about that now?
Well, I'm sure he'll have much to say about the some, the changes that, when we go over the legislative one. So if you don't mind, wait until then?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's appropriate.
I think it'll be more open discussion for that.
Yep, I agree.
And so, so Dale, you've got kind of an initiative that you've been working on with Blair, is that right? Or is this, is this something that's been in, in the motion right now to?
I started this last year prior to, just give you some history without mentioning any names, any, we had a contractor that, a sub developer that is being difficult, we will leave it at that. In fairness to that person, our rules are all there, but they're not very easy to find. And not only are they not easy to find, we don't have, and this is on us, we don't really have a good process to follow up on what it is our expectations are. There's, whether it's, some of it, it falls on the planning board, some of it falls on me. The zoning board just really needs to be aware of what these things are, so they know the expectations of the planning board, and we're communicating the same message. But we don't really have a good system that says, you were supposed to do this, you didn't do it. And if we're telling somebody they owe X amount of dollars, and nobody's asking, they're just going to sit there and be quiet. So that's, that's kind of the issue that I have with that. I think that if we all work together, and I'm sure the sub, the developers want this too. You know, they want to know what's expected of them. And I think we, I, I really see this as a positive for everybody, if we can get this, if we can pull this off.
Can I jump into this one?
By all means.
Yeah. So last year, you know, there was a little bit of a hiccup with a couple of things. And what Dale was looking for is kind of like a subdivision checklist that would basically, the starting point of the checklist is after a planning board approves a major subdivision that involves a new road, right? Frontage lots, it's not as much to do, it's basically pulling up building permits. But when they have to build a new road, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be done. And there's a lot of communications that need to start flying around the town, between different departments, between different boards, and then of course, the developer and whoever they're working with. So for example, the road agent by our, the town, but pretty much the road agent, is supposed to get a phone call before the contractor goes out there and starts putting shovels in the ground, so that they know that the project has been initiated. There's also the process of getting a bond into the town, right? That has to go through the select board, which means it has to go through the TA's office, which means it doesn't typically go through, you know, things to me go through the land use clerk, right? So it doesn't really typically go through me, it's a different part, so I don't really oversee it. But we got to make sure the right hand is talking to the left. So he started it, I went through the regs and tried to fill it out, and, you know, so we've gotten somewhere with it, but that's, that's just kind of an example of, you know, what, what we're looking for, what we're trying to do is figure out like, what needs to happen and by when, right? You know, one of the things that kept happening was that we would get people coming back to us looking for an extension on their subdivision or some kind of approval, but the regs say you only have twelve months, you have twelve months to, to initiate an approval. And they're coming, coming to us fifteen, eighteen months later, right? So we started putting that into the notice of decision to say, you have twelve months to initiate your approval. So it's, it's little things like that, just making sure that everybody knows what they need to do. You know, Alana was very good at keeping a lot of the things that were related to the planning board on track. But things that happened outside that purview, she just, either wasn't aware she needed to do it, or I mean, that it needed to be done, regardless of who did it, or it just wasn't something that was in her purview. So, you know, knowing when to notify people or when to ask for things, just to sort of stay on it, maybe a little bit more proactively. So having that checklist in place, you know, is the type of thing that, you know, what is, what the idea behind the checklist?
And to be clear, I'm not putting this on anybody else, a lot of this, the majority of it falls on me. You know, so I'm pointing at myself too, that would be nice if we just had a system that said, okay, we're waiting for the select board to initiate this, we're waiting for the planning board, you know, and myself, everybody. So this is, this is all departments, including me.
So it's not just a checklist, it's kind of like a flow chart too?
Yeah, exactly. It's, I don't want to change anything, I want us all to intermingle and work together and say, okay, well, I'm supposed to do this, but I have to wait till you do that, you know? And then the contractor knows too, you know? So, and one of the big things was, actually, I started it beforehand, but it came to light, it was about bonds. We have a serious bond issue right now, and we're, we're working our way through it. And I'm happy to report that everything is where it's supposed to be, but we did have a, somebody that was difficult, leave it at that.
So was it just the mechanics of getting it, is it done, done relative, but so that you got something to review? And, and then you're obviously going to reach out to us to help.
I would say it's more than just the mechanics, the mechanics is the good base. It's really, and we can also use this as an educational tool that, to let everybody know what they are expected to, to know. This, this is not a negative thing, this is something for us to move forward to make the process better. Nobody's doing anything wrong, we can just do better in how we do it. We don't need to wait on, we, we should be able to, when an applicant comes in and says, I want to put in fifteen houses, we should be able to hand them a packet and say, this is what you're expected start to finish. That, that's what this is. Blair's provided a tremendous amount of help on this project already.
The question is how, what help do you need for this? So if you have a drop in the future, so the mechanics of.
I would say we're closer to the start point than the finish point.
I think it would be, come down to, you know, he and I started a document. It, it needs, I'm looking at it, it, it's just a list of things. And it, it needs, you know, substantial organizing. But at some point, we're going to have to circulate it to the board, to the boards and to the other departments and say, okay, comment on this, don't just ghost us, comment and tell us what you're seeing and how this could read better. You know, sometimes it's like you don't know what you don't know, someone points it out.
Do we need a subcommittee made up of members from each group to kind of take this on yet? Or we're not there yet?
I think the goal is, if you look through our regulations, particularly the subdivision regulations, and which is a lot of times mirrored in the site plan review regulations, it lists out the process for a lot of the stuff, but it's pages and pages and different sections, and you've got to look in this section and then cross reference back to this section. The idea is to try to consolidate that down to a nice, easy to read bulleted list of who's responsible for what and by when, unlike you said, a flow chart.
I think, I don't think a subcommittee would work, I think we would be doing a lot of that. What, what would be beneficial to me is if that each department, you all worked amongst yourselves within your own department and provided me with expectations. I don't know what the planning board does, I mean, I do to a point, but like, there's so much I don't know. I don't know the zoning boards, your rules, you go to specific, you know, classes, things like that. Even the select board. So what would be helpful to me is if every board worked amongst themselves in regards to a subdivision, and just gave me a document that said, these are our expectations. And then I will take all of that and put it all together into one. And if there are questions as to timelines, like, okay, you want this, you want this, where do they fit in? I'll reach back out to the chairs, but it would help. I think it would be helpful if each department on their own worked together and just told me what your expectations are for a subdivision process, and then I'll put it all together.
Kind of starts with like conforming use or non-conforming use. And if you go conforming use, then you get into the planning board. And if you go non-conforming, then you're into the ZBA, and so on and so forth, yeah. But yeah, I agree, I think then also, you know, each department has its own kind of operating procedures that sometimes will just make sure that we're covering the bases for what that board needs to do, irregardless of another board, so we want to make sure that if we do have something, we can see that, yeah, the conservation commission gets thirty days to do this, and, you know, fifteen days to make a notice, and, yeah.
I'll give you an example, and this actually isn't a problem, but it's just an example that I'm thinking of that, to show you how convoluted it could be. So when we're talking about the roads, we have a third party come in. So now somebody has to tell that third party what our expectations are. They're going to tell us, you know, whoever we hire, they have that. Where does the highway director get involved? Who's doing inspections? At what point does the bond play into there? Who is looking to see what the notice of decision from the planning board was in regards to that? Obviously, the third party company that we hired engineers will, but you see how it all, everything intermingles and stuff like that. And everybody's kind of doing their job, but I don't think we communicate very well to the other departments or to the public. That's my goal. And there are things, and I will be right up front, I'll point the fingers at myself, there are things that I miss because I have no idea who's doing what at what point. You know, we, everyone's doing what they're supposed to, we just don't communicate well, and I think we can do better.
Yeah, this would go a long way in streamlining the process for everybody.
Yep, and, and again, I am not looking to change a single rule. I'm just looking to gather all the information and put it together in one document.
One of the areas where, this applies to any subdivision, one of the areas that get frustrated, that applicants get frustrated is sort of the lag time on signing the final Mylar. Because that involves making sure that all of your conditions have been met, and then doing the final review of their final plan set, and then, you know, the board making that, you know, making that agreement and then signing off on them. And, you know, a lot of times, really what happens is, is, you know, it's, it's because the applicant keeps emailing Alana or, or, or somebody to say, hey, can we get this going? Can we get this to happen? And, you know, it's, it, it, it's just a matter of, of us communicating with ourselves, but also communicating with the outside world, the applicants and stuff. One thing that we did do before Alana left, this is actually months, this is a while ago, probably information a lot of this, is that Alana's email, land use clerk email, plan.zoned, now gets automatically forwarded to me at SRPC. So this way, so if you ever say anything nasty about me to Alana or anyone else, just remember, I'm going to say it. Is that because that job was part-time, two days, maybe even three days might go by before I hear about something that I need to do because it was in an inbox. And, you know, at the time, I think Alana worked Wednesdays and Fridays, right? So if she didn't see something on, on the afternoon of Friday, wouldn't get it until Wednesday morning. And I could have been acting when I could have done something about it. So now all those emails get forwarded to me, this way I can, if it's something that I need to handle, I can do it, or I can play traffic cop and, and push it out, if it's something for Dale, or if it's something for Dirk, whatever it might be. So we've taken steps to improve this, but I think there are steps that can be taken to just make it run smoother.
I think all the boards would support doing that, so keep on going. And then when there's a point that you need our input, let us know. All right, let's, anything else Dale on specifics?
No, that's just big picture stuff, I do have a couple of suggested changes, but we'll get to that.
Okay.
So I, on this flow chart, I like that idea of a flow chart, because, you know, like, you know, Blair mentioned, you know, like, people have to have our updated plan or documents into the planning board before the next meeting, ideally seven days, and then, you know, they get it in seven days, and it doesn't get to Alana, and then she mails it or posts it, and we're seeing it the night of the meeting in a lot of cases. And it's, you know, we're, we're, we can't react to, you know, if it's a forty-page engineering report from, you know, it's hard to grasp that. So, yeah, that's, that I, a flow chart is good. And then after the subdivisions, what we don't see as a planning board is what's happening until there's a problem over there somewhere. I can't name, know if we can name these places.
We're not naming anything.
Okay, and, and then there was recently one where they came back and said, you know, what, what are you expecting for your, you know, your as-built road conditions, you know? When, when do we do that? So some definition on that, so we don't really see what happens after it leaves the planning board. And I don't know if anybody knows, but there's Patuckaway Ridge now has.
We're not naming any.
Whoops, five houses on the market. And, you know, anyway, there, I was surprised to drive up there one day and see a house built, and, and, you know, there's, now there's five on the market, and they're trying to sell them. And there's other spinoffs from this, they're going to convert those lots from.
We don't, let's not go into detail here on that, that's too much detail that we need to be talking about at this meeting. What's the point?
The point is that having an after subdivision approval or after zoning board approval flow chart might be helpful.
I, I agree with that.
And zoning board, we don't, maybe we don't know what case they approved. Maybe, you know, I don't know how, when you guys approve something at the zoning board, do you send it off to the planning board, hey, we approved this, this is coming your way, or, I don't know.
That's as simple as giving you a notice of decision if you want for your meetings.
And not everything would come to this, would come back to this board. Like, it's a dimensional variance to get a deck five feet over the lot line. You, you would have no reason to need that information. You're welcome to it, it's a public information in the same way that it's public to anybody in the community. But there's no default on that, which, you know, I'm sure we could talk about. But, yeah, it's just about making sure that we're notifying the right people at the right time about the right thing, right? There really isn't much for the planning board to do after decision. There's some things like sign of Mylar, but a lot of it ends up falling to like land use clerk, myself, to some degree. But a lot of times, it's most of the staff at this point. Like, once a board has made a decision, now it's the administrative side of the town's bureaucracy, town government to help somebody implement a project, you know, oversee it.
Dale, do you see the road, like, do you see reports on new roads being built? Or does that go to the road agent, or who's looking at that?
I don't get regularly copied on it, but I don't know that anybody ever said I had to. So, I took, again, add that to the list of, you know, things that we could talk about and, and circulate. But, you know, I think the goal is to focus on the things that have to be done and, and put into a secondary pile the things that would be nice if they got done, right? Like, the board doesn't need to, you know, there isn't, there isn't like anything compelling for the ZBA to send a dimensional variance decision to the board. But could it happen? Yes. But at this point, I don't want to put that on the new, you know, we're going to get a new land, land use clerk at some point. I don't want to put that extra thing on them while they're still trying to figure out the basic stuffs. And while Dale and I are still trying to put a checklist together, kind of thing. You know, in future times, yeah, I, I don't see why that couldn't be part of the process.
All right, let's move on to any of the boards, sorry.
So what is, what's our first goal and what's our deadline for this?
For what?
Should we set a goal of, you know?
For this meeting?
No, 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 for doing this flow chart thing. I mean, if, if each board has to go back and pull some stuff together, do we want to set a goal of what are, what should we pull together and what date? And while we have all the boards here?
I would like to have a rough draft together prior to the town meeting. Not because it has any effect on that, it doesn't, but we will get sidetracked with other responsibilities. So if somebody could have something back to me, and I understand that you're all volunteers, you know, even, I, I would rather do it right, even if we said December. If you could give me, we've been doing this for a year anyways, if you could give me all of your expectations by December, that'll give me time.
December first?
Yeah.
December first?
That way there, you know, it's like you're not rushing home today, this isn't an emergency, it's not, you know, it gives you time to do research, to talk to each other, you guys meet once a month, and then, and this isn't the highest priority. So I think December first, if you could give me what you want to see in this, and what I'm really looking for is not so much the fluff, I am looking for, I need somebody to sign off on this at this point, this, you know, that's, I'm looking for the technical stuff that we're, you know, providing to a contractor, that's what I'm really looking for. I think December first would give you enough time, and it'll give me enough time that we can do this prior to town meeting, which is just a made-up date, but at that point, we're all going to have other responsibilities.
Does that sound reasonable to everybody?
I have, I have a question. The conservation commission is under the umbrella of select board, but also when it comes to developments, the planning board. Do we get together and submit our wishes to you directly, Dale? Or do we run it by these other groups first?
I would say you're going to give it to me directly, just because something you asked for doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be in there. So I would say give it to me directly, but I would by all means welcome you to communicate with the whatever board you're responsible before you give me that stuff. You guys get together, figure out what you want to do, and then just give it to me directly.
Okay, everybody.
And that way, no one's left out, and because I think it's important, I don't really know what you do to great detail, you know? Talk to the planning board or the zone, or whoever it is that, on that particular instance that you work with, so you're not contradicting what they say, or you, or vice versa. Provide it to me directly, and then I'll go from there.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
That's good points. Yeah, I think from the planning board side, we meet twice a week, twice a month. We'll put this on an agenda for some new business when we get, you know, four then, and we'll.
And that's why I want to give you enough time, because this is, at least for the planning board, this is going to be, there, there's some work that needs to be done here, and I just want to give you enough time that you can, you know, not just, you, you can put some value into it.
Right, and that's why I wanted to make sure we had, you know.
Is December enough time? Because I'm just making up these figures.
Just do that.
Right, I mean, it, it seems reasonable to me, and that's why I wanted to make sure everybody was good with that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, good point, sorry.
Cut the easy one out of the way, now we can, no one's.
I was told to keep this to a certain time limit, but clock's facing everybody, so you guys have the time. All right, so I don't see any other department, folks from any other departments here. So we'll just move on to maybe the conservation commission. And then, and again, I just want to get some, just like Dale, you know, some initial reactions to what's been happening over the past year that you might like to see either in an amendment or changes, or something that can communicate between cross-boards to help us, the other boards understand. And then we can have other discussions about these other changes afterwards. And then we can have other discussions about these other changes afterwards.
Shall I speak? Uh, I have to say that during my tenure on Conservation Commission, and then part of that time on the planning board. We've seen a lot of attention to um helping our town protect natural resources. Wetlands, uh buffer zones, steep slopes, special environments. Regards to quality of life that we enjoy here, not so much noise, not so much um. Bright lights, and I think in, in big part, that has to do with planning board, listening to. Your audience, listening to the Conservation Commission, and pushing these programs as well. Thank you very much from my perspective, for the future, I think we're going in a good direction.
Great, great.
Um, in, in the past, there was one meeting that um, that you guys. Um, came, came and said, wow, I wish we knew about this thing coming up, how do you? Are you getting, you know, there come, the applicants coming to the planning board, then we say, well, you need conservation review? Is the applicant hitting you, or should we be saying we have these applications here and forward those plans? What, what would help to kinda?
The planning board has the authority to direct the applicant to come and meet with the Conservation Commission.
Right.
Um, if they don't do that, and the applicant has no wish to come to the Conservation Commission, that's their decision. But I have to say that most applicants from major subdivisions preempt the planning board and come and speak to us first.
Oh, okay.
So they have their ducks in a row when they come to you folks, for um their application.
Not quite most of them, but a, a good number.
A good majority.
In, they've read through the grapevine, and that's what they're gonna be suggesting.
Developers, developers who've come to the, um, come to town to develop all the, all the, all the.
Yeah, folks who are in the know, they, they just. But yeah, so I, I think that if it's, if it happens to be a new developer, or it's a, you know, it's a major subdivision, or it might be a subdivision where there are potential. Um, environment impacts, uh, the natural environment, then the planning board sharing that with us as well, recommending to the applicant. Come like, make it helpful, sometimes it can save time for the applicant too, they might come in, might give us something, they might not send something right email. And similar to what you said earlier, they walk in and they've got a set of plans, and it's the first time that we see it. So it's hard to go through that with them in a timely manner at a meeting without saying, you need to come in again, there's a month delay because we only meet once a month. And then that can be frustrating for the applicant.
So previously, have you gotten, uh, when somebody submitted a subdivision plan to a, uh, the town, did Alana send you? Notice of that, or did it just come to us and then eventually trickled over to you guys? I just wonder how that, how it got across.
I, I, I think that it comes into the planning office, and then we get notice that we have guests that will be at our next meeting. Um, I have to say, being secretary, sometimes we'll meet on a Monday, and we have to submit a report to the planning board by Wednesday.
Right.
Or the last term.
Yeah.
And so, you know, you know, you folks all wanna have that, the planning board wants to have that information. Have some time to digest it, um, but again, our meeting sometimes might be just two days before your meeting is, and that's when the applicant has chosen to come in. Or is able to come in, so it makes it a little difficult to get that information to you. Only, uh, two days.
And, and we have a statutory deadline from when, when an application is accepted to um approve it, so we're trying to squeeze stuff in. Or otherwise, we had to ask for extensions, which seem to happen on all of them.
That's, that's why sometimes if something comes in, you know, and then we get a heads up because they, if they can get it to us ahead of time. We can go through that much more quickly with them, and when they come in, we can, and we can, and these are our concerns, or.
Maybe that's part of that flow chart, that, you know, before it comes to the planning board, does it need to go to, you know. Uh, conservation and shh, send off a copy of the whole set, plan set to them, guys.
Yeah, I think that's the goal here, is to document the processes.
Yeah.
For all the boards, and, you know, your processes are like, um, if there's a conditionally used permit. For, specifically for wetlands, then it has to come to you. Now, sometimes they know this when they submit their application, Chris Berry knows, okay, we're gonna be impacting, but we gotta go see them. Sometimes they don't know until they get into the conversation with the planning board, and they're like, okay, it does look like we're gonna be, and we gotta go see them, so that's why it will happen mid-process.
Right.
Oh, right.
Um, but if you prepare your, document your processes based off of the town, the, the planning board's regulations. You're doing a conditionally used permit, if you're on a scenic road, right? These things apply to you, you're gonna have to see us, and here's what we expect, seven days in advance, but make sure you're not trying to get on the agenda. For the meeting, that, where the planning board meeting is two days later, you know, you know, if, if we have that stuff, that's a good thing that we. You know, like Dale said, you can make it available to applicants, so yeah. I think we're getting better about this, and I think the world outside of here is starting to get better at knowing this. Um, but yeah, sometimes it is just the fact that they don't really know until they get in here and start talking to us, like, okay, you gotta go talk to these people.
And we're, we're aware of that.
Yeah.
And I think there's a benefit too, cuz there's a liaison for the Conservation Commission on the planning board, so there's always that. Interconnection there. Anything else for the Conservation Commission from any other boards that questions are? Alright, let's move to the zoning board.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, um, yeah, most of our, you know, most of our uh. Variances and uh special exceptions, you know, come from, I would say eighty percent of our work comes from the lakes, the non-conforming lots. We get some subdivision stuff, but not too much, and I think that, that, you know, last year we changed to what the, back to the ten-foot setback for the septic. On the non-conforming, that, that, that was one we had a lot of, especially on the lake. And then, uh, now the state has changed the detached ADU, that was one we would get every now and then. But, so those are, those are changes that will probably lighten our load on the, the ZBA, so. Other than that, we, uh.
What, what do you see? Didn't you just have one on lot, on wolves recently?
We did have one, you're right, that was one, uh, yeah, that one came in for unusual lot because of a house. It was mainly because of the location of the house, and the setback pushed it back, yeah, the lots were big, very, very big, but. They, you know, square footage wise, but they just, the, it, that one envelope was, it was forty, forty-four feet, something instead of fifty, that.
Right, the bottom leg.
Right, and it was only because of that house. It was only the corner of the house, actually, so. Yeah, so we don't get a lot of the ones on the subdivision, we get, you know, one or two a year, but mostly, uh. Mostly the lakes.
What is your typical, uh, you guys meet once a month, and what's, how many cases do you usually have?
It depends, sometimes, depends how strict Dale is. Sending people our way, but uh, no, we, usually we have one or two cases a month, um, one night we had four. And uh, we don't have the schedule you guys have, but uh, you know, so we, we probably have a couple cases a month, usually.
The majority of their cases are actually in the wintertime, as people are preparing to do their project come spring. Summer, there's not a lot of cases cuz people are, they're already working and they, they have the foresight, so. Come around October, I start telling people, if you're doing this, you know, you get it to me early so I can get to them, they usually see the majority. You know, it's funny, we all have different high and low seasons, theirs, I would say, is in the wintertime, as people are preparing to do their project in the springtime.
Right, and we get, we get a lot of homeowners, we don't get a, you know, a lot of developed, we get subsurveyed, but mostly just homeowners coming in. To, to uh, get the, get it done, so.
Alright, can we move on to board selection? Do you have any?
I don't know if we have anything specific to, I. Yeah.
We're not talking roads, right? Tonight, we're not talking roads tonight.
Yeah, I don't think we have anything.
Kevin wants to go there again, he wants to revisit.
Switzerland.
Alright, so then, why don't, Dale, would you mind, I mean, Blair, would you mind um, kinda walking us through some of the legislative changes?
Yeah. So if you have that bluish document in front of you, or on a laptop or something, that would be great, I'll hide it. Alright, so. You received two documents relative to the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five legislative changes. That would impact municipal land use regulations. Um, the first document was sent last week, and it was quite a number of pages. Uh, this is from SRPC's whole staff, it was led by individual, individual, but all, everyone contributing this one, cuz we wanted to get it out fast, so it was like an all hands on deck. That document's like six or seven pages long, and it lists, what, maybe twenty-five different legislative changes that affect communities. Um, and you'll have to decide which ones do affect you, or which ones don't, which ones you, you know, and how you're gonna address them. Uh, but it was very thorough, it was a good toolkit, and, and, and it was very broad, you know, we've got eighteen member communities, so we. We had to, 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 you know, be, keep it broad, but then I put together, um, uh. Oh, so let me step back, and then when Jen, our director, sent that out to all the communities, uh. Uh, she said, she isolated maybe all the ones that you see in front of you here now, these ones we can help communities with. Um, and this will be part of, of a different project, um, you know, I'm paid for a, uh, for your community out of a. Uh, out of a contract with, with your community, we have other projects that we can work on to help all of our communities with, with things like this. If they ask, and these are the ones, because it's a housing grant, and these.
It's, the ones in here are the ones that were highlighted on this document in orange.
Yes, uh, I didn't look at that, this was s- separated for me by someone else, so I just put it in my own document. So if it happens to correspond, yeah, I would, I would guess, yeah, I would guess that that's what it is. So if you wanna see the full breadth of the legislative changes that affect municipal land use regulations, look at that initial document, that's like six or seven pages long. There's, there's quite a lot on there, um, but then this one that we're gonna talk about today, these are the priority ones. And the ones that you can get some assistance on, so I've already done a lot of legwork, um, and I just wanted to. I guess just highlight them, I don't wanna go through all of it, again, we wanna have a roundtable discussion with everybody, but, um. You, what you'll see is that private roads appear on here twice, um, there's a couple related to accessory. Uh, dwelling units, um. And then there's things that relate to building code, um, and for those ones, I just say discuss with Dale. So it's just something I've gotta pick the ball up and, 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 and talk with him about it, because, um, you know, it, there may not be anything for us to do, but. Uh, there may be. So the ones that I think this, that the planning board and the community do, do have to take action on. Um, if you're looking at this list, um, uh, the second one, uh, uh. The second one under two ninety-six, deadline to hear ZBA appeals, it used to be this, this statement of whenever, you know. You can, you can take an appeal against a ZBA decision within reasonable time, right? That's all it was, now they've said thirty days. So we have to change the regs to say thirty days, so that'll be an amendment, it'll be a fairly simple one, but they've set that, that, set an end date.
When does the clock start though? When someone comes to me, or when it gets submitted, or? This, this, that bill is effective on July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, so for us to change our zoning ordinance, we'd have to change it. This year to get it on the warrant ballot, warrant articles in March to hit that effective date.
Yeah, a lot of these are already effective.
Already effective, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um. The other thing that's sort of tangentially related to this is that last year, the definition of a butter changed. And it's not on this list, but it is on the bigger list, and you might wanna have a look at that, cuz that is also something that we will need to change. It's the definition of, of an offender, it, they've kind of tightened it up a little bit, it's not just anybody that wants to do it, you have to be. Uh, a defined a butter. Vesting periods, uh, vesting periods is in substantial completion. Um, active and substantial completion, so uh, i- if you're active, you're in the middle of exercising your permit, your decision. Um, reaching a point of substantial completion, um, the legislature changed it from two years. You have two years to reach substantial completion, which is basically twenty-five percent of all your utilities and roadways and stuff. Um, but, uh, so you had, you had two years, now you, uh, the, the, the state is giving someone to, for three years. Uh, to be, to reach substantial, uh, uh, substantial completion. Right now, our regs say one year, so we haven't even been in compliance, you know, at all, because it's been, it's always been two years. We've said one year, so we have to bring it up to three years, and then the same is true for vesting. Um, it's five years and they moved it to seven, ours says four, so again, we have not even been compliant as of yet. This, this, neither one of these has really been anything that's, that we've had to deal with yet, but, um, it is something that we will have to address. In our, in the subdivision and site plan review regulations, not the zoning ordinance, so that can be done, like, like internally. We have to hold a public hearing, but we don't have to go to town meeting, so we can do that at any point.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, yeah.
Um, so some of these that just, like what you were just talking about, um, you basically said one year, the state said two years for substantial development. They're changing it to three years, are these changes in our regs that would need to go to town meeting to be changed? Or they're just internal because of complying with state laws?
Oh, no, no, that's not the reason, subdivision regulations and site plan review regulations, two separate things.
Right.
They can be done by the planning board by holding a single public hearing, they do not need town meeting. Whereas zoning needs not only, uh, a hearing with the planning board, it also needs town meeting.
Would I also have to back, have a question, um, substantial development, is there a definition for that?
It's basically twenty-five percent of, of completion of utilities and roadways, the public, the public development part of it. Has nothing to do with the development of the site, it's the public part of it. Yeah, you're basically protected against changes to regulations if you get to that point, that's, that's what, why that's significant. Um, accessory going units, um, obviously, this has been a big discussion with a lot of the housing affordability discussions. Um, last year, the planning board had a very lively and, and long discussion about potentially allowing detached accessory dwelling units. In the end, they decided to table it and not pursue it as a zoning amendment, the legislature took care of that for you, so. Um, detached ADUs must be allowed by right, they must also be allowed. In a garage, or a shed, or whatever, uh, that is gonna be converted. Even if that structure is currently i- i- uh, over a setback line, in violation of a setback line. So it's an existing non-conform, you cannot pre- prevent somebody from converting a garage that's over the setback line into an ADU. Because it's in violation. Uh, because of this, we're gonna have to amend our definition and the description of ADUs, because we specifically say attached. Obviously, now that it, it's allowed to be detached, we need to update the language, um.
Can I comment on that real quick? Just cuz this is a little confusing how it's written here, um, in some of the literature that's passed out. Is detached allowed only in conversion, or can you build new detach?
Yeah.
I just want.
Yeah, it's two separate things.
Okay.
Yeah, you have to allow the detached ADU by right. Yeah, you have to allow the detached ADU by right. You have to allow the conversion, even if it's.
Yeah.
In violation.
So if you looked through the regular stuff as it came in, it's a little confusing that it, it implies that it's only for the conversion, but that is not the case. I just wanna make sure everybody stands up. What about? Actually, that wouldn't come under this, well, I'll get to that later.
So by right means it does not need to go to the ZVA?
ZVA, planning board, it has, it's just a building permit.
And and that's already effective immediately, so that's in play, so if somebody comes to build a detached ADU. That's already a rule, even though it doesn't meet our zoning, so. I don't know if they'd still have to come to the ZVA and we say, oh yeah, well, we didn't change their rules yet.
New construction still needs to meet the setbacks. If it's in an existing garage or something like that, or something that's being converted, setbacks don't apply. But if you just wanna build a new ADU, you're not exempt from setbacks.
Once they, they increased the size from what, seven fifty to twelve?
Nine hundred, not exactly, no.
So what they said was, is you cannot. You cannot, um, restrict the size to a. A size less than seven hundred and fifty square feet.
Okay.
You're allowed to allow them up to nine hundred and fifty square feet. So basically, ADUs are gonna be sized between seven hundred and fifty square feet and nine hundred and fifty square feet. I don't know whether they put a cap on it, but I guess.
Well, that's not exactly my interpretation, cuz I'm gonna follow what RSA is first versus the zoning ordinance, cuz that trumps it. But like he just said, we can't make it go below seven fifty, we've never done that anyways, so that's not an issue. But I'm still gonna follow zoning ordinance when it doesn't clearly state it, it says we can go up to nine fifty. But right now, the Z, uh, our zoning ordinance says seven fifty. And the towns are allowed to do that. So if anybody out there is listening, I'm still going to enforce a maximum of seven fifty unless we decide to change it to nine fifty. But as of today, it is still seven fifty, because that's what our zoning ordinance says, and RSA says you have the right to do that.
Yeah, that's why it's not in here, because we're all, we are, we're already compliant with that part, because. If we had set, if the town had set the maximum of an ADU size to six fifty, you'd now need to bump it up to seven fifty.
Yep.
But since the state said seven fifty, we're already compliant. I'm just saying, all ADUs in the future will be between seven fifty and nine hundred and fifty throughout the state.
So what's the process if they want an eight hundred?
ZVA?
You have to go to the ZVA for a.
I'll deny it and they go to the ZVA? And the ZVA can overturn my decision.
So the, so that does not need to be changed, we're already compliant, that's why it's not in this list. Yeah, the last thing that needs to be changed, and this is something that should have been changed a while ago, I I caught this, you know, a couple months ago. Is that we need to allow ADUs in all districts that allow single family residential. The center village district allows it, allows single family residential, but it doesn't allow ADUs. So we need to allow it in that district. That will be a change that has to happen as well. Um.
So what is the process?
Our commercial does not allow single family.
Yeah, I'll, that one's next, I'll, I'll come to that one.
What will the process be? Mainly for me, but right now, this has already gone into effect, all these things are laws and we're enforcing them now, so it's already happened. Normally, there's a process to change the stuff and the, and the taxpayer, the, the public gets to vote on it. Are we going to put this out like we normally do, or can we just change the zoning ordinance, how does that work?
No, we have, we have to have a public.
It just has to be done, so we don't even need to ask these questions of the voter.
No, we know, it, it has to follow the normal, it has to follow the normal process.
So what if they voted down?
I don't know.
That, that's a great question, that's.
Well, alright, so first things first, if, if. Voters voted down, a person comes in and makes an application that meets state law, and you deny it because the zoning hasn't been changed. They will turn around and sue and they will win. Yeah, and then you'll have to pay the legal fees to defend something that's indefensible. So you do it at your own peril. Um, but yes, the, I guess technically, the town meeting could vote it down.
So that's a message we certainly wanna make.
Regardless, I'm gonna follow what the RSA is, like whether, so I was just wondering, could we avoid all these problems and change it? Because that's typically, you can't do that, the voters have a right to input, but. Did the state, when they changed all this stuff and overrode anything, did they give any allowance for? You know, the, the procedure for changing all our, every town, every town out there is gonna be struggling with this.
Yeah, everybody's got a, everybody's in the same boat, everyone's gotta implement it, um, and 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 follow the same processes and take it to town meeting, you know.
What if the, what if the town, what if the change was to follow the state's law? Not have all of the red details.
That's good.
Yeah, that's the way we should do it.
If, if it changes, then it's still following that law.
You could put a statement right in there that what, regardless of whether this passes or not.
Put it in the RSA.
It, we have to follow the RSA, you know, that, that's a very good idea.
It could, it could just be a single warrant that says following state regulations.
ADUs follow RSA's.
Up, update to state regulations, uh, butters, subdivision, vest, well, whatever.
Just to be legal, we can list all the house bills that changed, just for documentation, we can put all that in one statement.
Yeah. Yeah, I, because if we're just putting words into our ballots, it's just.
Right.
Ridiculous, it's costing us a ton of money just to print ballots.
Pages do we want, right?
Well, and it's a lot of confusion to the public too.
But so, some of these changes, we need to send to the town council to, you know, make sure the wording and verbiage is appropriate for the zoning. Ordinance, and then we have to have a meeting, and then a public meeting. And then it goes on to a warrant article, and there's a time period for that, and then it eventually shows up in the town ballot. So it's a whole, you know, this process starts kind of like, you know, almost now, we're starting at the early part of this, which is great. Um, and November, December, we're gonna be having public hearings on these matters, and then they'll show up on the March ballot. So we, we wanna carefully make sure.
I don't know, uh, if you were asking rhetorically, or if you were, if you know the answer to that, but I don't know the answer to just. Doing it that way, uh, as far as town meeting, or even in the ordinance, just say as amended by the state, and it, it captures everything, you don't need to do anything in the future. So that would be a town council question, I don't.
I mean, it's certainly, we haven't been following the regulation, the, the, the state law on other things, as you pointed out. We're at one year and four years when, you know, so we're already out of compliance. If we had just referenced the RSA, then potentially, it would just change automatically.
Yeah, I, I, I think, um. You know, as I found out, you know, with a recent conversation with, with a builder, they pointed something out, yeah, we, our regs did not make sense, make sense. It happens, when you're dealing with three massive documents, and everything's gotta be talking to each other, and you gotta cross reference every time you make a change. It's difficult. My recommendation, anybody that gets involved in this, just use the control F key and do word searches. It's the best way to like get through and find out where everything is, 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 is having the same conversation. Uh, that's been my best friend with a lot of this stuff, and I've also, that's where I found some things in this, um, in our regs that are not in compliance, regardless of the state. So.
In the short term, just for the ZVA, there is the possibility that if I do a denial, you will see my reference to. The house bill number that passed, and I will not be, I will not be, uh, referencing our zoning ordinance, because that is what the law is. I think you will probably not see that, because the whole purpose of this was to make it less restrictive, and there probably will not be any denials. But this is just a good opportunity to say, if you see like that come across, say, what, what is this? It's because I have to follow the RSA, not our zoning ordinance, so if you see that, that's what that is.
Um, so as Eric had alluded to, he was asking about single family commercial district, um, so HB six thirty one on this list. Um, it is not allowing single family, single unit structures in. Uh, a commercial district. It's only allowing multi-unit structures, so three plus. The state defines multi-unit structures as three plus units. Obviously, a single unit, single family and duplexes are, are not part of this. So anybody that proposes three plus units in a commercial district. They now have to be permitted. Um, so that is something that we will, um, I think that, that's a change that we'll have to do.
So again, no multi-unit, it's like, you know.
No, multi-unit, multi-unit structures, three plus units, uh, must be allowed in commercial districts. So single family and duplexes are still not allowed. Unless the town chooses to allow it, but the state law, what it's compelling you to do is to allow multi-unit structures.
When the time comes, one of the things you're gonna have to discuss is, the new rule did allow that the ground floor has to be commercial though. So that's something that you, you know, we're gonna have to have discussions between now and then.
Was that a requirement?
It's not a requirement, it's an allowance, you're allowed to, but you do not have to.
Okay.
And that's why somebody is gonna have to decide. You can make it a requirement, but right now, it's not, it's just you're allowed to.
Yeah, but it, um, I guess it would depend on the use and. And whatever it gets submitted, but it's a commercial zone, retail's allowed there. So that would be fine, and then.
So the communities in their downtown, like I, I, I work in Summersworth as well, doing their housing stuff, uh, regulations and. They require, if you do like a, a, a three-story structure, they require the ground floor to be commercial. They want an active storefront, active street level, active pedestrian level, right, they, they don't allow the, um, residential. This community may or may not want that, but what, as Dale pointed out, they're giving you the allowance to do that. Um. Yeah, so, uh, two eighty one, um, I don't have an exact recommendation of what needs to happen, cuz I think it's gonna be a lot, but basically. There is now a, a requirement that towns allow, uh, people to build on class six roads.
This is from the Realtors, Realtors.
One of the reasons that this hasn't been allowed in the past is because of the condition of the roads, they're not really. In a way, prepared to handle, um, an emergency vehicle, you know, in two feet of snow, let alone in just regular time. Like you start throwing snow on top of that ice, whatever, you know, these roads can be quite have, uh, uh, can be quite, quite, um, uh, a havoc to drive over. Um, so they're saying that you have to allow someone to be able to, uh, uh, build on a class six road, but they can, you can require them. Um, they may be telling you that you have to require them, but you sign a li- a li- liability waiver. Meaning that the person recognizes that the town is not responsible for sending emergency vehicles out to you in the, in the instance of an emergency. So if you call nine one one, you're on your own, is the way I understand it, I could be wrong, but that's basically how I understand it. Um, and, um, you have to record that document, so the town is like. Just so you know, we're letting you do this because we have to, but we are not responsible for you, and you're gonna record it. Um, so they basically, the state's saying, you have to allow, but you're gonna require them to sign a waiver that the town is not responsible for emergency vehicles. There's gonna be a lot of conversation about this one, um, and, you know, we'll have to go through all of our documents to see. Where this applies and then what the changes are. So I haven't even tried to outline it on this, I think it's gonna take a, a lot of people's efforts, so.
I would think somebody with a mortgage, that would be pretty hard to clear that hurdle of, you're on your own, you know. You build a house, the insurance and everything else, I mean.
Yes.
Nobody's gonna come running in to loan you, I mean, somebody could do it on their own, but, yeah.
Yeah, um, you could see it, you could see it with like, uh, you know, manufactured homes, I mean, you can get those fairly cheap and just pop a lot of, you know, some pilings or something like that. Someone might be able to do that with a cash deal and not get a loan or not care about insurance, but yeah, you're right, I believe, we've all talked about this. And as I'm sure you guys have too, or at least in your own conversations, uh, private conversations, uh, but, um, yeah, that's. That's basically what the, what the legislature agreed on, yeah. It will be difficult, for sure. Um, there's now required, or there's, there's now, um, an allowance to, the, the, uh, towns cannot, um. Restrict construction, uh, multi-unit structures up to a certain height, uh, and require them to have two means of egress. So like that usually that rear stair, stairwell, um, uh, it's a building code thing, I'll talk to Dale about it. See if there's anything that we need to do, but that is, um. We don't get into floor area ratios, and, uh, we, we actually don't set minimum parking requirements. So I was kind of surprised to see that, we are very progressive here, we have zero parking requirements, so, um.
There, there are some subdivision regs, but they're, they're not in the zoning ordinance, there's no parking requirements in the zoning.
In the ordinance, but we have had notice of decisions and things like that.
Oh, as a special condition?
Yes.
Yeah, but the regulations don't, don't say anything.
Subdivision regulations only, not zoning.
I'll check. Um, if we have to make a change in one of those regulations that says anything more than two, I think it's two per unit. Then, uh, we have to review it, I'll double check, um, but, um, yeah. So those are the, those are the big ones, uh, as I said, have a look at that bigger document that I, that I sent to you, um. Uh, I'll start going through that one eventually, but I've gotta focus on these ones right now, and, um, um, I may come back to you. You, you know, my contract with the town does allow for zoning amendments, but it's not robust. My primary, like, like eighty-five percent of the contract that SRPC has with the town is to do your, the technical reviews of submitted applications. Um, other things related to regulations and zo- um, and, and master plan stuff, um, you know. Uh, there is allowance for that, but the lion's share of it is for the review, so I, I cannot personally, um, uh. Walk you through and prepare zoning amendment language for all of these things, um, it's just the, you know. I wouldn't be able to do anything after March, basically, I, you know, I would have run through the budget, we ran into this with the last one, cuz we had a very robust. Zoning amendment season last year, and I spent a lot of time preparing things and, um, and it. Kudos to, to the community for, uh, approving all of the ones that we put forward, but it did leave me very short at the end, so. I am sort of preemptively telling you, all of us have to contribute on this, because, um, it's gonna just be entirely on me.
Blair, before we move on, just one quick question, um, in reference to the ADUs, we're allowed to do detach, there's a lot of stuff. I've seen two different things, and I really, I, I honestly don't even know what the answer is. What about lot size, is that playing into it at all or not?
No, they, they specifically state, and again, because the town never said anything, I didn't bring it up, but the state now says you cannot make. Any new, you cannot require increased lot sizes if a person puts an ADU. Like I worked in Middleton, they say middle lot size, two, two acres, if you want an ADU, you have to have three acres. You can no longer require that, so they will have to make a change, this community does not for that particular.
But for multifamily, it still applies.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's totally different, yes.
So on the ADU, um, in most of the, uh, language in there, in the end, it says, um, you know, the, um, applicant needs to, um, show that they have, um. You know, adequate sewer and water capacity, um, so they would have to provide a septic design. They don't have to install it, but a septic design that's approvable to show that, you know, they, their lot could have the capacity.
Yes, yeah, all the, all that same stuff still applies, I'm sorry, maybe I shouldn't have said this to you, these are where you need to make changes. I went through all of your regulations, and, and if I've listed on here, these are changes that you need to make, if it's not on here, chances are there isn't a cha- a change we need to make. Um, so yeah, that's what the, the blue sheet is, it's like.
Can I say that SB two eighty four and the last one is actually SB two eighty five? Um, and, um, I believe.
Yep.
I think you had the wrong number on that one.
Okay.
And if, um, for anybody here and doing homework, you could go on your interweb and type in house bill six thirty one. And it'll pop up on your screen, and then on the left-hand side of that, there'll be versions of the bill. And then the final voted version, so you could read the complete detail, instead of like the quick summary that's here, if you want to get the expanded view, so. Uh, very, very accessible and easy, but you have to kind of look at, there's a lot of information on the page that'll pop up, but on the left-hand side, there'll be. Final version of the bill that's been voted, and it'll have the whole complete write-up on each one of these.
Yeah, and, and, uh, the legislative toolkit that SRP sent around, we have, SRPC sent around, we have hyperlinks to. The bill, but then we also have, um, hyperlinks to what's called the chaptered final version. So you can actually see it plugged into. So you can actually see it plugged into the RSA, um and uh this is just helpful for. Because if it was something that's already going into effect, it will already appear there, so.
Some things that aren't in effect yet.
Right, that's correct.
Different dates for different things.
Many of them have different dates, um a lot of the stuff we were waiting for the governor to sign, because it's really not a thing until the governor signs it, right? So um uh my understanding is that uh everything that should have been signed has been signed, but. Uh you know, just double check.
One more real quick question, this might be really silly, uh about the. The square, this is allow for conversion of existing structures, this is when you could sort of shoehorn it in if it's already there. Does the the square footage have to already be there or can you expand something that's already there?
What do you mean?
If you have a structure that's not meeting the minimum size.
There's no minimum size, there's a maximum size, so the tent lights, alright.
I thought seven fifty was the minimum.
For this community, it's both, one minimum, no, you can have smaller, you just can't have bigger. So the, but the state said you can't. Make the minimum smaller than seven fifty.
The minimum maximum size is seven fifty.
Required size is seven fifty, but all I'm curious about is if there's a structure already there that doesn't meet the requirement for the square footage. Can that be the conversion of the existing structure? Like if you have a small thing.
As long as it doesn't exceed, in Nottingham, you cannot exceed seven fifty, there is no minimum, so if it's a hundred square foot shed, you can do it. As long as you can meet building code, because it still has to be habitable space per building code, as far as the use of the land. That's that's what we're talking about here.
He brings up an excellent point, though, that if you have a garage and it's one foot over the, one foot away from the property line. We have to let you make an ADU setbacks don't matter, but if this garage is say four hundred feet. And you now want to add an addition of three hundred feet or three hundred and fifty feet. Does that three hundred and fifty feet fall under the conversion or is that new and has to meet the setbacks? That is an excellent question.
I think that would just fall under existing.
It's it does say existing structures in the law, so I think if you're adding, if you're adding onto your garage. You, that's not no longer existing, so that's.
Well, but it's the same thing for any house that's that's not conforming, like the lake properties, adding to them, you just follow the procedure, which is to get ZBA approved. Which is what I think you would do, but as far as.
You can't do it automatically.
So you can't do it automatically, but you can't deny the use, they just have to go and be considered.
Right, but they could go up.
Up counts, up up counts.
Well, I mean, it's still in the same footprint.
That's tha- that's a farce, because if you're one foot off the property line. And you know, you have one story and now you go up two stories, three stories, you're like, I'm in the same footprint, well, somebody's looking out their window in your window, it's still. An encroachment, it's still, just because it's up in the air, it's still in the setback.
Yes, that is something, nonconforming is one of those hotly debated things, and I have ZBA chairs that would. Go to the exact opposite of what he just said, he said, you can go up as high as you want, as long as you meet, as long as you stay underneath the maximum height. They consider that, they don't consider that to be an extension of a nonconformance.
And they're more than welcome to override, but that's gonna be my decision.
Like it is, it's it comes down to interpretation in that in that respect, but um yeah. So a person on a three hundred square foot garage can convert that. And they want, if they have a nine hundred square foot garage, they can convert it as well, but they can only. Show seven hundred and fifty square feet as habitable space for the ADU, the other hundred and fifty square feet will need to be dedicated storage. You know, something like that, but the rest of it can be habitable, so just because the structure itself exceeds seven fifty. It's about the size of the ADU, yeah.
So does that mean you just draw a line off on your existing building and say that storage doesn't count and that's it?
Yeah, it's the same as someone calling, calling a a fourth, you know, a third story. An office when it's clearly a bedroom, but it doesn't count towards septic, yeah, just people are gonna game the system all the time, but yes. I've seen, I've seen it done, if someone exceeded it in Stratford and all they did was just lop it off on the wall and call it storage. And there's nothing you can do about it, it is what it is, but yes.
Any other discussions on the legislative changes or questions? So let's talk a little bit about schedules and did just a little bit, um. You know, for the March town meeting, January, February is the last chance to hold a public meeting. Uh and that would be almost like, that would be a second public hearing if that's what we wanted to do. Um we should be preparing these amendments, you know, in November, December or before. Um could be done in January, but it's great to target those first public meetings in December. And that way it uh allows a second public hearing if we want to in January or i- if necessary.
Yeah, any changes that come out of the public hearing therefore require a second public hearing. So the public hearing has to be where the planning board votes on it and then it stays that way until it goes to town meeting. So it only has to have a second uh hearing if there's a change to it.
So that said, I mean, we've got some work to do before the end of the year. These amendments and as you mentioned, you know, it's a scramble always towards the deadlines and I think that's in any profession. Given a deadline, you're gonna wait up right to the end of it.
And and there's also, you know, there's a lot of folks being paid on what isn't the important part, the stuff we have to come up with compliance with, but there's also things that. We've all talked about throughout the course of the year, years of other changes that aren't driven by the RSAs. I don't want anybody to think, and I'm sure Dirk Dirk would agree with me, doesn't want anybody to think that they can't have that conversation as well. Um it's just that we do need to prioritize these things we wanna become compliant with.
Yeah, and and exactly that, if there's other things we should be talking about and want to.
That's the calendar, right there.
Oh, there's a calendar right here, thank you.
Yeah, it's so ridiculous to read.
Yeah, I so New Hampshire Municipal Association would have the calendar. It's um for the March SB two is the one that we would follow.
This is like eighteen pages.
But the dates are laid out and it's it's really good.
And I spent a solid hour going through it, only to have Ellen tell me, Blair, you did it for the May SB two towns, we're March, and I'm like. I had it laid out, chapter verse for you guys to make it so easy, and then I'm like, you know what, forget it, I'm just gonna write. Just get it done, um so yeah.
So we in that same vein, though, of, you know, is there, if there are other things, you know, that out of this meeting. Boards or departments can think of that we might wanna take up and the planning board has a list from last. Year maybe of some items and maybe they're already dealt, but um probably should go through those in the next couple of months, just to make sure. That we're gonna get everything we hope to um for the changes.
Can I throw out a couple feelers on that? And they're both very minor, um as Blair said earlier. A tremendous amount of work went into the last year, so we made a lot of changes and it showed, things, things ran very well this year. Um there were very few changes needed, there were very few problems, both boards were. And it doesn't make a difference what the rules are, but both boards were much more in line with each other, um things went very well this year. So I really don't have a lot of changes I'm gonna bring forward, or not changes, suggestions to make changes. There's two things I'd like you to consider and they're both minor, um the first one is as far as private roads. We're seeing a lot more because of our past and what happened with changing the roads and things like that because of nine one one and. The process and then on top of it, all the private roads that got voted in, I'm seeing a few things here and there and. It's very minor, but as far as addressing, we didn't do the whole town, we only did a portion of the town, so what happens is. Let's say you live at whatever, ten Smoke Street. And your neighbor's twelve Smoke Street and now somebody wants to put a house in between, I don't have a number to give it. The solution, what we do nine one one is is we name your driveway, your driveway has now become a private road and. It and that's just a way of keeping things in line and stuff like that, that's how it's done. What I don't wanna see, though, or what I worry about is that. Somebody through no fault of their own now lives on a private road and has excluded the rights of what the town road would be and setbacks and things like that. And it's very minor, but I think we ought to look at maybe putting something, and I don't even know what the answer is, something in the ordinance. Saying that if you're on a private road strictly for name for driveway, that we're protecting those people, I just think that's something we should consider. Um it doesn't affect the majority of us, but if you're that one person, you know, we should have a a clause that. Treats them the same as everybody else.
Like what could, what's an example of something I couldn't do because of this?
Well, sep- like if you're on a private road versus a town road. Um we're going to look at setbacks and that that's not even. It it's more like if a subdivision or like what, it's it's very confusing, but it does come up, um and and you're catching me off guard here, but um.
If you can give me a clear, so that I, you know, I.
Let me put something together and give it to you in writing.
So I can try to walk you through that, because I'm sure I fully understand that.
There's a. There's a very specific case, which I am reluctant to mention names or anything tonight, um I don't think that's appropriate. I I'll bring it up and I'll give the examples, I can send it to everybody without telling you who it is and everything, um as far as how it affects people and stuff like that. Um if we go back to. And and this is the whole road issue, but to give you an exam- example is like when we changed the private road, it was somebody. Wanted to put an addition onto their house and where the private road was versus the road, it affected them, um.
Oh, maybe because of like side yard setback is different than front yard setback or something like that.
Um so I think we have to just look at that and you guys don't have to do anything, I'll put something together and I'll send it out to everybody and I'll show. In detail what the problem is, I just wanted to get everyone thinking about that. Uh the other thing is Dirk started this off asking like what I'm seeing alive this year and I'm seeing a lot more because of one of the. RSAs did change uh home occupancies, our regulations, there's nothing wrong with them, how we do it. But they're very vague and I think we ought to look at that a little bit more, the minor versus major, and maybe you guys will look at it and say it's fine. But I would like you to look at the home occupancy uh rules and see what you think on that.
O- occupancy meaning? Home occupation.
Occupation, I'm sorry. Thanks for the save, home occupation, not occupancy, yeah, uh home occupation, running a business out of your house. It's allowed, no issues, I just think we could make it a little bit clearer.
Yeah, we had a couple of people inquire about doing the same exact thing, just different, different ways of doing it in their homes and it did draw some questions. About where you draw that line between major and minor and some of the other expectations, so yeah.
Did it have to do with the number of um cars or parking or the number of employees, what was the hangup?
It was kind of that, it's like. You know, one of them, I thought I remember, it was like, well, listen to what this person is describing to me, but. And if you read the reg, they're like, this needs to be a major, they need to do site plan and review. I mean, that adds a considerable expense for home occupancy, home occupation. I even typed it home occupancy and I'm like, this doesn't look right, what are we talking about here? Um so yeah, it it just, it triggers, the major triggers. A full review, but more importantly, getting a surveyor out, right, to do it and to show everything on this on the site and, you know, um you. We wanna be mindful of this, we wanna allow it, but we wanna have, we don't want it to affect the people next door to them, right? And so that's really what it was, it was like the trigger between minor to major and the requirement of a site plan review. When if you listen to what the person's telling you was gonna happen there, you're like, geez, that doesn't sound like a whole lot. But technically speaking, so that's, that was one of them that I remember.
What stood, always stood out in my mind for that was the business traffic. So it could be employee traffic, could be deliveries, could be, but the amount of that I thought was what's.
And ironically, what he's saying i- it's very accurate, but if it does become, and I'm not necessarily determining whether it's major or minor, if it is major. Then it's taken out of my hands and then there's a site plan that the planning board, you will decide what it is, but what if it's minor? What are we telling them are requirements, you know, is it the same rules as for a regular sign, you know? Putting signs, how many cars can you have, can they be on the road, hours, noise, sometimes very rarely, but environmental. You know, we, it's just something that, just take a look at it, let me know what you guys think. Those are the only two things that I'm gonna be coming to the board for for changes this year, very, very minor, I think we're in pretty good shape.
Um as far as that one goes, uh if you look at that legislative toolkit that we prepared. Uh one of the changes that happened a couple of years ago, um. Home-based childcare facilities, we have to allow those by right, um we cannot require a site plan reviews. There is a cap, so they can't just have eight thousand kids, um but I I don't know, I don't think that we're meeting it. So this was something that was passed last year that we need to look at.
I don't know exactly what the change is, because this wasn't a high priority one, but there there was a change, something about this in regards to food. I've already had two different um applications, just as far as people cooking muffins and stuff. So it it is gonna become more prevalent as far as whatever the changes are. That's all I have, sir.
Okay, anybody else thinking of additions? Alright, well, we've got a schedule, not the eighteen pager, but Blair will synthesize that down, right, a little bit more. And. Think about each one of these uh legislative changes.
So legislative changes are, you know, as I said, a priority, one of the things that keeps happening and, you know, and I kinda joked about this with people here, it is. Site plan review and and subdivision regs haven't been changed since twenty fifteen for subdivision. And twenty sixteen for site plan review, because we kinda just keep kicking them down, like, oh, let's just focus on zoning, because we can do site plan review in subdivision at any time. Because it doesn't require town meeting and then it just doesn't get done, so there are definite things in those regulations that need to be addressed, so. If other people in the room wanna focus on those, you know, I could spend a little more time on zoning, um but um. I won't be able to get to all the zoning, but at least I can focus on that and this way we can still maybe move, kinda move balls forward on on on. Both on all three fronts, the site plan review, the zoning and the and the subdivision regulations.
Well, on behalf of the planning board, I appreciate everybody coming in, um you know, this is the planning board's meeting, but you guys are always welcome. So, thank you. Is it adjourned? Motion to adjourn, everybody, everybody gets a vote.